All right. So I will start with the roll call. Chair Delany.
President.
Vice Chair Hecht.
President.
Commissioner Texler. Here. Commissioner Liu. Absent. Commissioner Van Rees.
Here.
Commissioner Huma Yun.
Present.
And Commissioner Whedon.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start the meeting, do we have any comments from the public on items on the agenda? I don't see any hands raised. All right, so. Let's move on then with the Environmental Commission meeting minutes. Did you have any edits, comments, questions? No? Can I get a motion then?
I'll move approval of the December 12th meeting minutes.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. I will take a vote to approve the December 12th meeting minutes. Chair Delany.
Yes, so the next agenda item is an important one. It's the reach codes. I think you have a presentation, right?
Yes, sorry, we're taking a vote first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. I'll just start over. Chair Delany.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair Hecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Texler.
Yes.
Commissioner Liu. Absent. Commissioner Van Rees.
Yes.
Commissioner Huma Yun.
Yes.
And Commissioner Whedon.
Yes.
Yep, the minutes for the December 12th meeting are approved.
Thank you, Casey. All right. Next agenda item is the reach codes with a presentation from you or at least from the staff.
Yes. So I will give a little background and then a presentation and Tanya will help me present as well.
So I have a quick question before you present. Was the presentation actually in the packet?
No, it was not.
Okay, because I saw it below, but then I couldn't find it. Okay.
Okay. So just as a background, on September 6, 2022, City Council accepted staff's recommendations to: One, complete a cost-effectiveness study based on the recommendations of the Environmental Commission on reach codes. Two, refer the recommended reach codes to the California Energy Commission for comment. Three, affirm or re-adopt the existing reach codes to continue after December 31, 2022. And four, to direct staff to review what other peer and local agencies have adopted with regards to reach codes. And then on November 29, 2022, City Council adopted the updated California Building Standards Code with local amendments that included the previously existing reach codes. And these will continue to be in effect for three years or until these new reach codes have been adopted. So as an update, staff completed the following tasks. We reviewed the Bay Area Model Reach Code, the existing Los Altos Reach Code, and Reach Code Recommendations presented by the Environmental Commission during the September 6, 2022 City Council meeting. We conducted research and compiled data on reach codes adopted in late 2022 in peer and local jurisdictions. We reviewed and gathered cost-effectiveness studies relevant to our climate zone based on those reach code recommendations presented by the EC. And we are also finalizing a local cost analysis to determine the electrification costs for a typical single-family home in Los Altos. So we will present our recommendations to the Environmental Commission for comment and approval. And then after the Environmental Commission reviews the updated reach code recommendations and approves them, staff will bring these recommendations to City Council in March 2023. Okay, let me just share my screen. Okay, can everyone see the screen in presenter view?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So hi, everyone. We'd like to present city staff's reach code recommendations. We'll walk through the relevance to the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I'll go through our building electrification recommendations, and Tanya will close out with our EV infrastructure recommendations. So these reach code recommendations are directly tied to the goals and actions within the Los Altos Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Data from 2018 indicates that residential and commercial energy, as well as transportation, are the two largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Los Altos. Based on the city's current and forecasted greenhouse gas emissions, guidance from city government, and community input, the city has elected to pursue a goal of carbon neutrality by 2035. The city has also set goals related to energy, which includes requiring all electric construction for new buildings and major retrofits. Within the transportation sector, the city has a goal to reach 80% community-wide EV adoption by 2035 and to accelerate community-wide electric vehicle supply equipment to support this EV adoption. These overarching cap goals are further broken down into specific action items as shown here. Within the energy sector, cap action item 2.2A is to adopt evolving reach codes and expand to include large additions and major remodels. And this includes adopting reach codes that go beyond Title 24 standards during every code cycle, including zero net energy requirements. And then within the transportation sector, cap goal 1.4B is to actively promote EV adoption and require EV-only parking. And this includes requiring businesses to set aside a percentage of parking spaces for EVs. Cap goal 1.5A is to increase the number of available Level 2 EV charging stations in workplace, commercial, and multifamily areas. And more specifically, to increase the number of available Level 2 EV charging stations at businesses with more than 50 employees, multifamily homes with more than 10 units, and in commercial areas. And then cap action item 1.5C is to expand the current electric vehicle charging and pre-wiring requirements and future reach code updates. And more specifically, to continue, the current requirements for EV pre-wiring and Level 2 charging in new single-family development and to extend to include large remodels and additions and to double the requirements for new multifamily and commercial development as part of the future reach code updates. So our recommendations address multiple aspects of these cap action items. So for building electrification, as part of our research, we looked at reach codes for neighboring jurisdictions in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. We looked at whether the jurisdiction included a 50% modification rule, which is part of the model reach code. And we also looked at whether or not they allowed for exceptions for all-electric residential and then non-residential construction. In summary, 53% of the jurisdictions we looked at included this 50% modification language, and 73% of them included either the 50% or a 75% modification language. We do not currently include language to include large additions and major remodels within our current Los Altos Reach Code, but this is a recommendation that we are proposing for the updated Los Altos reach codes. And then for residential construction, 60% of jurisdictions require all-electric residential construction with no exceptions. And this is consistent with our proposed recommendations for residential new construction. For non-residential new construction, 80% of jurisdictions require all-electric construction, but allow exceptions for specific occupancy types. This is consistent with our current Los Altos Reach Code and consistent with our recommendations for the updated reach code. So in addition to looking at those neighboring jurisdictions, we also looked at our own permit data within Los Altos for single-family residential construction for the year 2022. And this gave us a better understanding of how many single homes, single-family homes would be electrified under the proposed reach codes. So we looked at data for new construction, detached ADUs, additions greater than 750 square feet, additions less than 750 square feet, and residential alterations. Our current system does not directly track whether or not 50% of the structure is added or modified. But for the purposes of this exercise, we assumed that all permits for additions greater than 750 square feet would meet this 50% threshold. And approximately half of the permits for additions less than 750 square feet would meet the threshold. And based on the data, we have those additions often include modifications to the existing structure as well. So therefore, accounting for new construction, detached ADUs and additions would bring our estimated electrified homes to 143 approximately. So this is compared to just 80 if we only included solely new construction and didn't include any kind of modification language. Therefore, staff recommends that we include a 50% addition and modification threshold that would be defined as new construction and trigger the all-electric building requirements. And this would apply if more than 50% of the sum total of foundation, roof framing, and exterior walls are added, removed, replaced, or relocated. We also assessed permits based on valuation thresholds. So we looked at permits that had a valuation greater than $100,000 and permits that had a valuation of greater than $250,000. And these were just for permits that applied to additions and alterations. So permits with valuations greater than $250,000 primarily include renovation or addition work that would already meet our 50% threshold. However, by including a valuation threshold, the building department will have the ability to quickly assess if certain projects will be required to meet all electric requirements. Projects that fall below the 250K threshold would need to be evaluated to see if the 50% addition or modification applied. So if either of these thresholds is satisfied, the all-electric building requirements would apply. Looking at 2022 permit data, based on these rules, 59 addition or alteration projects would have automatically required all-electric construction. So here is a table showing the current Los Altos Reach Code, the 2022 California Building Standards Code, the Bay Area Model Reach Code, what the EC Subcommittee recommended, and then our staff recommendations all the way to the right. So we are recommending a change the new construction definition that is based on what the Model Reach Code is recommending. So the Model Reach Code is recommending that new construction also include if the project modifies more than 50% of the foundation or framing. And we are taking that a little bit further and saying that it applies if greater than 50% of the sum total of foundation, roof framing, and exterior walls are added, removed, replaced, or relocated. So that will include additions and modifications within that calculation. We are also proposing that we update our all-electric building definition. Currently, our definition is a building that has no natural gas or plumbing, no natural gas or propane plumbing installed within the building. The Bay Area Model Reach Code expands this definition to a building that contains no combustion equipment or plumbing for combustion equipment serving space heating, water heating, cooking appliances, and closed drying within the building or building property lines. And this definition specifically is expanding to include infrastructure within the property lines. And so we want to adopt a a definition that reflects the Model Reach Code. And then for an extension of exterior gas infrastructure that is currently allowed under our Los Altos Reach Code and allowable within the Bay Area Model Reach Code, but per the EC Subcommittee recommendation, we would no longer allow new extension of exterior gas infrastructure. So that is what staff is recommending as well. And then taking a look at three different building types: single-family, multifamily, and non-residential. For single-family, our current Los Altos Reach Code is all-electric, but provides exceptions for cooking in fireplaces. The 2022 California Building Standard Code allows for mixed fuel buildings. The Bay Area Model Reach Code is calling for all-electric with no exceptions. And the EC Subcommittee recommended the same, all-electric with no exceptions. And so we are recommending also that we require all-electric construction with no exceptions. And this is the same for multifamily housing. So there's currently an exception in the Los Altos Reach Code. We are recommending that there be no exceptions for multifamily new construction. For non-residential, our current code is all-electric and includes an automatic exception for for-profit restaurants. And then also allows any non-residential buildings, laboratories, and public buildings to apply for an exception. And requires certain parameters around that application. So this is the only item where we have not met or exceeded the Bay Area Model Reach Code for building electrification. And we are recommending that we keep our existing reach code exceptions for non-residential construction. I'll pass it off to Tanya.
Thanks, Casey. All right, let's hop into EVs. So I just wanted to give a refresher on some of the EV terms that will be coming up in the following slides. EV-capable references infrastructure needed for future installation of a wired outlet. So it's infrastructure-only. EV-ready is the infrastructure plus the wired outlet commonly used for the driver to plug in their portable charger. And EVCS is the infrastructure as well as the charging station with the cables and plugs. Next slide, please. So let's jump into our recommendations, and I wanted to preface this with the statement that all of our recommendations either meet or exceed both the current Green Building Code as well as the Model Code. And that all these options allow for load sharing when multiple vehicles are charging. Just keep that in mind. All right, so for our first recommendation on single-family residential, the EC Subcommittee went with one Level 2 EV-ready space and one Level 2 EV-ready space for two-plus spaces. That is a little more restrictive than the Bay Area model, which went with one Level 2 EV-ready and one Level 1 EV-ready. And it is more restrictive than our current Los Altos Reach Code, which is one Level 2 EV-ready space and one Level 2 EV-ready for two-plus spaces. So our staff recommendation is to go with the EC Subcommittee recommendation and also allow for load sharing. So for our second recommendation on multifamily residential, the EC recommended going with the greater of the Bay Area model or our current Los Altos Reach Code. The Bay Area model provided two options for the jurisdiction to select from. And the current Los Altos Reach Code is 25% Level 2 EV-capable and 75% Level 2 EV-ready. So staff went with the option A of the Bay Area Model Code, which is 15% Level 2 EV-chargers and 85% low-power Level 2 EV-ready. And as intended with the Model Code, the total number of spaces should be 100% of dwelling units or 100% of parking spaces, whichever is less. Next slide, please. Okay, so for the following three occupancy types, the EC also recommended going with either current Los Altos Reach Codes or the Bay Area Model Code with the greater of the two. So for the hotels and motel occupancy type, the recommendations are, the Bay Area model recommendations are stricter and not stricter than our current Los Altos Reach Code. So we we went a little further and recommend 10% Level 2 EV-chargers, 30% low-power Level 2 EV-ready, and 60% Level 2 EV-capable to accommodate for the 100% and go beyond the Bay Area model as well as our current Los Altos Reach Code. So for office and institutional occupancy types, the current Los Altos Reach Code is the more restrictive. So we stuck with this ratio, but bumped up Level 1 to low-power Level 2 EV-ready to be aligned with the 2022 California Green Building Code. And for other non-residential, we're pulling from the Model Code for recommending 10% Level 2 EV-chargers and 40% Level 2-capable to meet the minimum requirements of the 2022 California Green Building Code. Next slide, please. So for off-street loading spaces, we have decided to hold off until the next code cycle as this requires more research and there's a lack of off-street loading spaces in the city. And for existing buildings, the EC recommended the Bay Area Model Code to be applied. Currently, our Los Altos Reach Code does not apply for existing building parking. So we are going with the Bay Area Model Code to account for 10% of the total number of parking spaces. Altered should be Level 2 EV-chargers. And adding that additionally, any existing EV-capable spaces on the property be upgraded to a minimum of Level 2 EV-ready. And that concludes our recommendations. I'll pass it back off to Casey.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Casey and Tanya. Just have a quick question. Was that reviewed with the Subcommittee before this meeting?
Yes, we met with two members of the Subcommittee last week.
Okay, good. Okay, so maybe we can exit the presentation screen. We can come back to it later. But I just want to see everybody. And I'm going to ask if we have members of the public that want to make a comment with regards to the reach codes and these recommendations from staff.
Chair Delany, would it be appropriate to do questions from the Commission first before?
Yeah, we can, but I think I think we're gonna have questions and discussions mixed, I think, with this. Yeah, so I'd rather, if it's okay, I think it's probably better to take public comments now and then we can have a full question and discussion section because I think we'll have a lot of that. So I actually don't see anybody. Yes. One, two. All right, two so far. So let's start with Connie Miller.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I guess first off, I appreciate you going a little bit further than the Commission recommendation on some of those. I like the trend. I just had questions asking for clarification. I have three, actually. Should we assume that if it's a mixed-use building that the residential portion of the mixed-use would apply with the residential rules? And if it was commercial, the commercial would apply? That's my first question. My second question is the slide with hotels and motels, office and institutional. Is that for existing or just for new construction? And then the third is how do you define low power on your EVs for your multifamily? Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Crystal? Crystal Wickham?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. So my name's Crystal Wickham. I live in Sunnyvale, and I serve on the Sunnyvale Sustainability Commission as the chair. I'm also a co-lead of the Climate Action Leadership Team, which put on the Code Red event in January. And many of our cosponsors also came from Los Altos. So I appreciate the staff's recommendations, and I did have a couple of comments with respect to the Sorry, I have some notes here. Yes, so I would encourage no automatic exceptions for restaurants. There's many other cities that have exceptions only with an application that has to be approved by the building official, and it really hasn't been an issue. There are so many co-benefits to electric commercial kitchens, including There are so many co-benefits to electric commercial kitchens, including a cooler work environment, improved safety and improved air quality within the restaurant. Um many electric commercial cooking products are available. And um and I could provide some resources if if you're interested in that. Um you could also reference the Sunnyvale code language that that just has. Exceptions only with an application. And I also um applaud the recommendation for um applying the EV. Parking restrictions for um redeveloped parking or additional parking. It's a a great addition that's in the um Bay Area Reach Code model. And just just lastly, I I did want to um uh just comment that the. The electrification resource page that that Los Altos has on the website is fantastic. And um I've I've seen a few of these pages around other other cities and. Uh the one that Los Altos has is excellent and I applaud the Environmental Commission for putting that together. And uh would recommend that it just is easier to find on the website because you kind of have to really search for it right now. Thank you so much for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Crystal. I think we don't have any more uh comments from the public, so um I'd like to open. The questioning and the discussion from the commissioners uh around these model reach codes, um not this model reach codes, the the new reach codes for Los Altos. And perhaps maybe we can go back to the presentation and then start with the section which has to do with electrification of buildings. Because I'm sure we'll have specific questions for some of the language. In there. So if you can go to the the recommendations directly perhaps.
Uh actually, I had a chart really quickly. Can you just tell us what the asterisks mean?
Yes, those are the jurisdictions that directly border Los Altos.
Okay, can you can you go back one slide before we go to this one? I just had a question about the valuation aspect. Um. So so you saying that it's likely that permits with a valuation above two hundred fifty thousand dollars will qualify. For all electric buildings. Because of the size, you believe the size is in line with what would be in the reach code?
Yes, so I think um from what we looked at, buildings. Um additions and alteration permits that already had a valuation of over two hundred fifty thousand. Uh would likely already qualify in that fifty percent addition modification threshold. Um so including this valuation is really just um helpful for permit streamlining. Um and allowing the building department to um. Automatically push those those projects forward for all electric construction. Um and not having to run through the full calculations for those specific projects. So we've set it pretty high. So that we're already looking at buildings that would qualify for that fifty percent too.
Alright, so that would be an automatic. So if if you have a permit with a valuation above two hundred fifty thousand dollars automatically. Um we will require that the the buildings become fully electric. Or do we still have to go back to the calculation about the fifty percent modification or addition?
No, it would be an automatic um qualification.
And the valuation is based on what?
So Chair, this is Nick Zornz, the Director of Development Services, so I can jump on really quick just to kind of explain high level is um. All building permits have a a dollar um figure that's somewhat attached to um. To the price of a permit, so um if it's a water heater even, there's some type of valuation that's assessed um based on our um city. Uh specific um fee schedule. So that's something that's set totally separately. Um and of that, from there, these are the permits that would already qualify just based on that. So. Um for example, we have um you know, a price per square foot when it comes to an addition. So. There's your multiplier right there. You know, let's just say for number purposes is um a hundred dollars a square foot. It's it's not that, but I'm just saying for easy math. Um and then how many of our square feet you're adding, then that's your multiplier and you you times it out. Um but then there's obviously all the other um add-ons or additions, kind of like, you know, you're adding a car. And this feature, that feature, and then you end up getting your valuation um from simplistic terms. That's inevitably what a building permit valuation is.
But that calculation is done by who? By the city or by the contractor?
No, it's something that the contractors do provide their contractors estimate. However, the city always verifies. And takes whichever of the two is the higher.
Okay. What what if the um the applicant is a do-it-yourself type or or is acting as the general contractor themselves?
That doesn't factor into it. It's the actual scope of work that is actually what determines the valuation of the permit.
Okay, because um you know, when I have applied for building permits previously, they sort of rely on. What you say. I I've never seen the check or or that you're talking about with city staff.
Right, that's something that's done in the intake process. The public is not a part of that for that very instance is that we do it to make sure that we're in compliance. So it's a fee valuation that the commission doesn't have purview over nor to staff. It's something that's established by the council. With a third-party consultant that inevitably determines what that valuation chart actually ends up being. And then we calculate it out based on the scope of work of what is included in each individual building permit.
Okay, I I've wanted one question that would the definition be that? If you're building, if you're over two hundred and fifty thousand, then it applies. Or it's an or or is it an and between the valuation uh and the uh square footages or percentages?
So it's an or because you if it's. You're you're gonna get it one way or another if you're over two fifty or if you're doing it that way, but we would also. We would restructure it in the way that it would be that it's um your fifty percent modification or two hundred and fifty. So if we don't ding you on this, then it would ding you on the valuation, which is inevitably something that it's already achieving just by virtue of if you look at what the. Current slide shows is that we're, you know, we're already getting sixty, you know, permits just based on valuation alone.
And then between the hundred thousand and the two fifty, you would be looking, in that case, you would be looking at the square footage automatically.
Yeah, well, no. So if it's not an automatic trigger by the valuation of two hundred and fifty, then yeah, we would still have to do the full-on um math. Um by the fifty percent calculation. We were just showing for purposes of that hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand are kind of the. The most um commonly used kind of large chunk when people are doing, you know, remodels and additions to their homes. Um and so that's kind of the the big breakdown that shows you if we went with two fifty, we're gonna claim immediately for sure about. Um what is that? Uh at least close to or just over twenty percent of the permits that are issued um that would trigger this anyways. And then if we were to do a hundred thousand, we would be, you know, in like the forty percent range. So it really just depends on exactly how we end up. Um you know, moving forward with the valuation component. It's just an extra layer on to um what we'd be requiring.
Okay.
So um just to add on to that, so the valuation could be uh. Um for example, if if it's not an addition, it's a remodel where, say, the house is being, just as an example, being pulled to the studs and everything. You know, and then um rebuilt a around the studs. So it's not adding square footage and it's not um changing. More than fifty percent of the roof or the foundation, but then it would still qualify because it's a certain valuation. Is that?
Yes, that's that's another way that you could look at it too, is that if it's not gonna trigger it from any of the modification or addition kind of criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Um if I may, I don't know, Bruno, if you were done, I I wanted us to go back one uh one more slide up and just uh. Confirm since um what these numbers look like, the one forty-three equals. If it's an addition over seven fifty square foot. What's this seventy-four? These are additions less than seven fifty, but?
Yes, so those are addition applications that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet. But those those from what I've looked at also often include modification. Within the existing structure. So I've I've included approximately, I've included half of those as an estimate to. That's include in this one hundred and forty-three that would potentially be modified to um fully electric, fully.
Okay, so so the trigger is not an addition of any amount. Like, you know, even if it's less than seven fifty, the trigger is greater than fifty percent modification.
Correct, so we're not including, yeah.
And then the seven fifty square foot foot is in itself an on automatic trigger or is it still the fifty percent modification?
No, it'll only be the fifty percent modification. Um.
Okay, so this is just for, okay.
Yeah, it's just currently.
So this is just for you to get the numbers. Okay. So it could be an addition of uh any amount if it's less than the. If it's not impacting the rest of the house and it's less than the two fifty. Uh thousand dollars valuation, then it wouldn't be triggered.
Correct, if it doesn't meet that fifty percent threshold.
I'll give it back to you, Bruno, for for your questions.
That's fine if you um I we we can um keep moving down the presentations if if it's okay, if you don't have any more questions.
Again, I just wanted to clarify uh the triggers. Yeah.
I think that's the way permits are recorded right now in Los Altos, so that's the reason why they. Went through the exercise of trying to figure out exactly what was fifty percent modification.
Mm-hmm, correct. Okay.
Um next one and for the the one after two slides up. Yeah, next one. Alright, um. So I think that's that's where I think we can start having some questions and discussions. Um maybe I I can I ask the 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 subcommittee to to comment maybe first? Or to question first?
So I'll just go since I was speaking, just finish my comments. Is that I think this is a smart way of doing it. Um I like that we've added on the dollar amount. Um because, you know, again, my my concern is that was that so many um remodels. Um are effectively rebuilding the house and stripping out all the appliances, but then um. You know, we wouldn't want them to be putting back in appliances. So if it's, I think, um at least that dollar amount trigger. Captures some of that, so um I I think that's a smart way of doing it. Um beyond that, I think I everything makes um make sense to me on this page.
Okay. So I think the best is to, you know, go slide by slide and and then move down every single line. If there are no questions and comments, we can move on. Um. The new construction definition, uh I know you've you've added a little bit of language in there. Um. I would assume that the new construction definition therefore would include evaluation.
Um I'm not sure if directors always have a comment on that, but I I don't know that that's exactly where it would be. Once we write the ordinance, um but we'll. It will also be included as a trigger, but I'm not I'm not sure if it will be new construction definition.
Okay, so it would be separate from the 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 definition itself. It would be a trigger defined as a trigger, but not necessarily the definition.
That's how I understand that.
Yeah, that that's correct. It would not be, we can't use that in order to create the definition of new construction, but we can use it as a triggering point for the electrification of a home.
Okay. So sorry, I was just wanting to, yeah.
Sorry, then then you in that case, I'm going back. Does it make sense to modify? Uh. I I guess it's fine. I was just curious. I mean, the reason we had. Use the modify the new construction definition because then it was easier to, you know, pull in the certain types of remodels into. By just saying it's new construction, but I'm wondering if you're having other categories. Does it make sense to keep them as separate categories um? For clarity purposes.
I I think realistically what the commission, if the commission wants to um determine a fifty percent threshold. And staff is proposing an addition of evaluation criteria as well. I think that's something that is a policy-level decision and that's something that myself and Director Fairman and the city attorney need to look at. Um when it comes to actually drafting the ordinance itself.
Makes sense.
Um so realistically, the commission doesn't need to vote on where it lives in the ordinance because inevitably that decision rests with the city attorney. Um so we can vote on the policy of that, yes, you want that triggering point. Um and then we'll decide where that ends up going for the applicability. Um because unfortunately, the one thing I want to at least just say across the board for that. For when we're going through these rows, kind of how we're gonna move forward the rest of this um item tonight. Is keep it high level at the policy um of that that's what you want or don't want. Because realistically for the application, so that we make sure that these types of triggers are not missed in the future. Is we have to make sure that it's really clear and evident in our local ordinance. Because inevitably, we have structural and non-structural building plan check review that's done by out-of-house third-party consultants for building review. And so it needs to be as kind of in your face, like easy to understand versus kind of digging it out of certain areas. So that's something that we'll make sure that we integrate before we proceed with the final ordinance.
Makes sense.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Just so I'm sure I'm completely understanding this. In the proposal, the staff recommendation, this means that if the remodel is triggering the code. Then any existing um exterior gas appliances would need to be removed.
I think that's a good question. And I'm. We might have to verify that one.
Um the building officials on the call, Veronica, if you know that that's what the intention was for this particular one, you can let us know. Um if it happens to not be, then that is something that, again, the commission can affirm in their motion. Um in order to be able to have us integrate that into the draft ordinance. Veronica?
Yeah, I it was not the intent to have them remove any of their existing exterior. Um unless they decided to modify it in any way. Um I think what the new definition is doing is not allowing them to extend the existing gas line to the exterior.
Alright. Um so with that, like I said, is I think that's again keeping it at a policy-level decision is that if the commission wants to. Have that be as a part of the integration of your motion for the final ordinance, you so can. Um and then staff will proceed with that. That's, I think, gonna be the best path for us to be able to move this forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions, clarifications on this slide?
I have a question slash comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um for the all-electric building definition, I'm curious what benefit there is to delineating the different uses. I'm wondering, I I see some benefits in the Bay Area model reach code definition compared to what we currently have, but I'm wondering. How different it would be if it just said building that contains no combustion equipment or plumbing. or plumbing within the building or building property lines. Any thoughts on that or just, yeah, because, because to my eye, it seems like saying specifically those uses creates a loophole where you could come up with a use that doesn't include those and thus you're okay.
Can you repeat which use you're referring to? Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand what you're.
Uh, I'm saying if you were to, um, get rid of the part of the phrase saying for combustion equipment serving space heating, water, heating, cooking appliances and clothes drying. Um, it just, it, it reads to me like you can then say, oh, if I, if I have combustion equipment for a different use, um, then, then it won't, it won't be factored into this, so that's, that's just my observation.
So would your recommendation then want to be to buildings that contain no combustion equipment period and then leave the rest off? So that there's not any loophole?
Um, I suppose so. Well, no combustion equipment or plumbing, but, um, uh, just if, if it's necessary to keep the, within the building part, that I, I do think the addition of building property lines makes sense, but I just want to know if anybody else also feels it that way about that.
I, I, I think the, the, the question I have is, um, when we define it this way, um, if someone wants to install a generator, that wouldn't be included in there, I'm guessing, because it's not gas, it would most likely be, well, it would be gas, but not, uh, propane or methane gas.
Well, we have a separate section.
With generators, for example.
Yeah, we have a separate section, um, and prohibition against generators in residential properties. So there's something that's totally separate in the city's municipal code.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask you another question to that effect. If it's already in the municipal code, I can tell you that not very far from where I live, there's a newly built house that's on sale right now for ten million dollars and they have a generator.
And some people do add those after the fact.
Okay, it's clearly listed in the, in the, in the marketing documents.
Yeah, and some, and some residential properties add them after the fact in order to be able to have that.
Okay, so then I'm gonna add something to that, so how can we, I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out what we need to do either in these rich codes or in the building codes to make sure that doesn't happen.
I, I think for the purpose of tonight is that we need to proceed with the specific recommendations that are in front of the commission. That's something else that can be discussed in order to be able to move this forward. Because we have, we're still on the first slide from when we started going slide by slide.
Yes.
And that's an in-depth conversation to talk about generators.
One general suggestion I may have, may have here, um, Director Fairman here, uh, would be, you know, some general language saying including but not limited to, and then listing the items. Uh, but I leave that to, uh, Director Sors and Building Official Tinoco uh, when drafting the ordinance, but some language that could, you know, list some examples but not limited to.
I think it's a very good suggestion. I think it allows us to list what we know is going to use gas right now, but we leave it, you know, I make sure it's not exclusive, it's not just inclusive.
I don't want to get to try and craft the language, but I think the intent here is that an all-electric building uh, doesn't have any combustion equipment or plumbing within the building or the property lines, you know, means no gas service to the building or the, or the property.
Yeah, so that's, that was, I think, what we had at one point talked about, at least the, uh, the, uh, subcommittee had, uh, discussed that, you know, if it's an all-electric, um, it's, if it's new construction, you know, brand-new construction, then they don't have gas connection to it. Now, is that something that's? Um, is, is that, is that an option to kind of, that's one way of preventing people from going after the fact and doing things? Um, um, especially sometimes that may be dangerous.
Right, which is exactly why this is something that I think we're already spending like ten minutes talking about a possible generator and we don't know how it's connected, we don't know how it's fueled. We are talking about new construction which would not have gas lines. So unless someone's fully going out of their way to plum gas lines illegally and connect them to a major purveyor, um, such as PG&E, I don't really think that's happening in town. However, there are generators that operate off of diesel fuel um, that people can buy and have on site and there's a lot of, of these nuances and this is not necessarily the recommendation of what we need to move forward with for this particular thing. As I stated before, is that there's other sections of the municipal code that govern the generator component. And we can talk about that at a future date. However, in order for us to move forward with the reach codes that the council has been waiting on, we need to make recommendations on what's before the commission tonight. And generators is not what the staff has prepared, nor have they researched. So this is kind of like a derailing the conversation and something we cannot adequately educate ourselves as well as the commission on.
So just to clarify, Director Sors, I think maybe, um, um, Bruno, you could take this on. Uh, my understanding is that this discussion is just to understand that the intent of the reach codes, um, as is, is clear in, and obviously this is not um, the wording of the document, and I think, um, Bruno brought up, brought up generators as an example. And it makes sense to, you know, kind of, we think we know everything, but we don't, right? Um, but are we, are we clear in our intent uh, of what we want to do, but when we say what an electric, all-electric building means? And further than, actually, I have one more question. I know you're, you're wanting us to move forward, but, uh, I think does it really mean the building or does it really mean property line? Because then um, that changes, um, what we do with, um, outdoor appliances. So I think we just need to be very clear on that, because that's, I think, the heart of, um, this version of the reach code.
Right, which is the policy level decision that the commission needs to make the decision on is if it's within the confines of the wall or the building property lines, or is it an and/or, so that you're further covering it?
Yeah, I think for the, the purpose of the meeting today, I mean, the reach codes is something very important. I mean, we've been working on that for quite a while. It's a, it's a second version after the, you know, to upgrade the one that we had three years ago. And I think we need to spend the time, we need to spend as a commission to make sure that we're comfortable with what we're sending to the council, so. You know, I, I realize that some questions we may ask may not be relevant to the reach cause in that case, I think it's fair to say that we need to address that at a later date in the, in the, as part of a, uh, a separate discussion. I brought up the question about the generator because, you know, it came up, I was surprised to see it, and I thought I would ask the question here. If you're telling me it's not part of the reach codes, fair enough. We'll deal with that at a later date. And when we take a look at the building codes, but I think it's important that we ask the right questions and that we're clear on what we're trying to achieve uh, before it goes to the council, so we have a unanimous, um, commission with regards to what's going to go to the council. So I think, I think we've, uh, we've done what we had to, we've discussed what we had to discuss on the second line. I, I just think that, um, whatever you want to, however you want to write it, um, like, uh, Director Fairman suggested or like, uh, uh, Commissioner Van Rees suggested, uh, is fine. Um, I think the only additional question that I would have, and I'm bringing that up just when we say no combustion equipment or plumbing uh, within the building or building property lines, we need to make sure we understand what that means. We're not asking people to remove their gas lines. We're just asking them to not add any additional gas line for any additional equipment. Is that, is that my understa, is that correct? My understanding correct?
I think the understanding is that under the fifty percent definition, if you're adding to or modifying an existing structure, those gas lines may be kept, but we're not, I don't believe we're actually asking them to remove gas lines, um, and they will also not be no extension.
Well, I think that's, uh, so therefore I think we should have that discussion, because if you have someone with, uh, a barbecue and a fireplace, and I don't know what else outside hooked up to a gas line, and, um, they remodel their home, more than fifty percent of the area or the, the roof or the walls or the foundation, whatever, are we going to ask them to cap the gas line and stop and basically tear down their fireplace and barbecue or whatever else they have, fire pit?
That was, that was the same question I asked, Bruno.
Yeah.
So.
And I, I think that's.
So I think what they're look, what, what staff is asking is that, um, we make clear in whatever motion or whatever we as a commission are, um, recommending tonight, whether or not that falls under, um, the current staff recommendation, we can make clear we believe it should or should not happen that way, and then that will be factored into, um, the final recommendation to the council.
Correct.
Okay. So, but right now it means we, the gas lines are kept. Correct?
Right now, I don't believe that we are asking people to change their existing gas appliances based on a building modification greater than fifty percent. But that is something that the commission can advise on.
Okay. Because I think it's, it's dead with in the, in the following line, which is no extension of exterior gas infrastructure. I think, I think that was what the original intent, but we will not touch uh, what's already existing.
So that's correct. We wouldn't touch anything existing on the exterior of the building, but the interior of the building will no longer have gas. So there will be no gas appliances allowed within the building footprint, but what's existing would be allowed to be remain, and they couldn't have anything new on the exterior.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think it's a, it's a question of language there in the, in the, in the last, uh, last part of the the recommendation in the second line, which is, you know, all building poverty lines, I think, you know, it needs to be clear that we're not asking anybody to cap their gas lines or to remove the gas line, we're just asking them not to add it in new ones. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, next slide, then, I think, unless we have some more comments and questions.
One more.
Okay.
I, I'm, I still have, uh, uh, well, I guess it's something maybe for the commission to discuss and say if it's, um, fine, then it's fine. But that's where maybe differentiating an all-new construction, say where you know, everything's torn down and then completely rebuilt versus a remodel. Um, whereas you could differentiate that all-new construction and say if it's an all-new construction, you know, everything's taken out and put back in, then you cap the gas line. But if it's a remodel, however amount, then we're not touching your outdoors. Um, because to me, that's one way of moving forward in eliminating gas connections bit by bit. Um, but we may decide that that's not what we want to do at this point. And, and then we're, we're good with that. But we just need to be clear that that's what we're deciding.
Okay, so we, we need to move on, but, um, what was the origin, I mean, I'm gonna ask the subcommittee. Um, originally, I think we had discussed obviously not adding any additional exterior gas infrastructure. Um, were you thinking also, um, thinking of new constructions and not remodels or additions, but new constructions? The, the original intent was, was to, um, have absolutely zero gas line in the building and within the property lines for new constructions?
So this is, I, I really think we're going down a rabbit hole here, but, um, it depends what, you know, new construction, even i- if it's an existing lease, you know, if it's a building or a home that had service to it, what do you call new construction? A complete scrape? There's, but there was still an existing gas service. And what we, our intent was no, no, um, uh, addition, no extension of gas lines, but if you have an existing home with, um, appliances, gas appliances outdoors and you completely scraped the home, there was no, there was not an intent to remove the gas appliances ever in, in this subcommittee discussion. A completely new gas, you know, a completely new lot that had no services before, they would not be able to add a gas service line.
Okay, that makes it clear. Thank you for that.
Right, most, most new constructions in Los Santos are basically houses that are torn down and then reconstructed. So wh- what is the policy recommendation there for those types of new constructions?
Well, and, and Don, please, or, um, Tom, please feel free to, my understanding is we were always, um, understanding that if there was existing gas appliances, even if it was a completely new interior building rebuild, those exterior, if you're not moving those gas appliances outside, you get to keep them.
That was, that was my, that was what we discussed as a committee that, you know, if you have a pool in the backyard that has a gas heater and you're not modifying or changing the pool, that can remain.
What, what about staff then? What, what, what was your intent to reach, you know, in the, when you, you crafted this new, uh, this, uh, new language?
I think our intent is in line with what the EC subcommittee is, is saying.
Okay. All right, next slide. Let's move on. Any questions, comments on this?
I, I would make the one comment that we've heard that, uh, I think there, I would propose that we not have an automatic exception for, for restaurants that it has to be reviewed just like, uh, buildings and laboratories.
I would agree with that. Any other questions? All right, next slide then. Okay, so let's stop, let's stop here. I, I, I'm thinking we probably should do, um, two votes, one on the buildings and one on the EV infrastructure, if that's okay. All right, so let's go back to the, the previous slide. Um, thank you, this one would be best. Uh, not the, the one that, yeah, this one. Um, can someone make a motion with regards to the definition of buildings or electric buildings and, um, and additions and remodels? I can try to make one, but, um,
I suppose I can take a crack at it.
Um, thank you.
Uh, I'm making a motion to either, uh, modify the mention of the specific uses or to add clarifying language that there are other uses beyond those and as well as what we discussed of having uh, clarification that, uh, exterior uh, gas appliances, uh, if not touched, would be able to remain. So I'm not missing this. Please, let me know if I missed something that we were talking about.
So I, I might, I guess I'll, I'll let others staff chime in, but I might propose that we just make a note of the specific amendments. just make a note of the specific amendments that the commission is recommending based on our recommendations. And then vote on everything else and then vote on those specific amendment.
All right, so um, let let me try to rephrase that. So I make a motion to approve the proposed staff recommendations uh, for the definition of all electric buildings and new constructions with the following amendments. With regards to the definition of all electric building, we would need to remove um, the details with regards to the equipment. Or make sure that it's understood that it's not just uh, that equipment that that can be. Anyway, I should not sure how to say that, but um, so um. I think a motion to approve the staff's recommendations for building electrification with the exception that all electric buildings um, the definition of all electric buildings um, remove the appliance language or add language for including but not limited to. And also would like to amend the non-residential um, building with regards to restaurants, laboratories and so on, that the exception been not be automatic, but the uh, an application for an exception be required before granting it. And lastly, um, that new constructions with existing outside gas appliances or gas appliances or gas lines outside of the building but within the property lines um, that be removed or capped.
And I think that that's probably clear. Extension of exterior gas infrastructure is not allowed.
Yeah, that's right.
I I have one question, I guess, is is I I don't know if it goes in any one of these boxes, but we talked a lot about the the trigger of a dot dot construction dollar amount. And I don't know if that should be noted here in the new construction definition or if it's somewhere else in in the ordinance.
I think it's somewhere else in the ordinance, I believe, and it's gonna be up to the legal council to decide why it is. But I think it's a it's it will be part of the definition, correct?
Yeah, it it are not part of the definition, but someplace in there, there's the value valuation threshold. I think you're getting the gist of it, Casey.
Yeah, I will add it to this this table. So we're looking at everything at once. In these two tables.
Okay.
Should we consider?
Find the amendments.
Sorry, should we consider taking out the line or building property lines? Because to me, that's still confusing, but um, if it's not to anyone else, we could leave it there.
No, we need to leave it there. That.
Okay.
I have that motion.
You second the motion. Thank you. Now we can take a vote.
Okay. So the motion is to approve staff's building electrification breach code recommendations with amendments that include um, an amendment to all electric building definition, either removing the appliance language or adding language for including but not limited to. We've got the valuation threshold uh, and then amendment for um, non-resident residential for profit restaurants and requiring an application process for that exception. Correct?
Uh, restaurants as well as um, other non-residential buildings. Building buildings, laboratories and so on.
Correct, yeah, those already.
Yeah.
Require an application. Okay, so I will take a vote on that motion. Chair Delanyu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Texler?
Yes.
Commissioner Liu? Absent. Commissioner Van Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Humaun?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whedon?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. All right, now EV infrastructure is the next one. Okay, you can move on to the next slide.
I'm sorry, I just need to step out. So I'll join in again from my phone. Um, please to continue.
Okay. Any questions on that slide?
I have one comment, I think on the multifamily. The current Los Altos code, I think, has the language regarding less than and more than twenty units. That's not in the green California building green code. And I think it's not quite right because the the current Los Altos code requires the first twenty units to have EV level two. So I I think I think that the 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 information in the columns got switched.
Um, I believe the California Green Building Code does separate by unit as well.
I I, okay, I I think you should check on that because I'm my recollection is it's it's that the Los Altos set the twenty unit limit in a council meeting.
No requirements for less than twenty units, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, with they, the current code has language in it that if it's less than twenty units, it requires EV level two. And if it's more than twenty units, the first twenty one units are are EV level two. And then then it's a percentage thereafter.
Okay, we we can double check on that, but I think for the purposes of the recommendation, we are uh, removing those uh, less than twenty units, greater than twenty units and going with the model code option A, which applies to all multifamily units. Um, so the recommendation we're putting forth here is fifteen percent level two EV chargers plus eighty five percent low power level to EV ready per the model code.
Yeah.
Okay, I have I have one follow on question. Is it the intent of when you're developing the language for this code, there is an exception in the model code that reads something like uh, if the construction, if the construction cost is increased by more than forty five hundred dollars a parking space or four hundred dollars per parking space for for affordable housing, then the the requirements, there can be an exception to the requirements. And um, I'm wondering if if in your putting together of of these recommendations, if you were considering that uh, exception that's in the model code.
Is your question regarding affordable housing?
Well, it's 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 regarding a a lot of it, and it has to do with not only affordable housing, but also if the the EV changing from an EV level one to an EV level two. Then you know, the cost becomes an issue on all of this, and there is that exception. You know, whatever we put forward into the recommendations or into the language, cost is a consideration, especially for affordable housing. But the model code has this exception in it for for certain costs. And so I'm I'm just wondering if in the building of this proposal or recommendation, if that is part of the the proposed recommendations, the the exception.
Yes, we what we're proposing is is not including the exception, but we do have an exception for multifamily. And it's staying the same as what the current multifamily exception is in the in our current Los Altos reach code.
I guess I didn't follow that.
So I think this might be a case where we want to make explicit in our recommendation that we would um, we would like to recommend inclusion of the Bay Area Model Reach Code exception for if adding the additional level two or adding the level two charging exceeds a certain amount per you per per unit that um, we would want to include um, the exception for for that cost threshold. And we can go back and that, you know, we can dig up whatever the languages is used in the model code. But I think as long as we convey that we would we would recommend including that cost uh, trigger exception or whatever you want to call it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I believe that that exception is a generalized exception so that if if a developer or whatever, you know, uh, can identify that it that the cost of providing these EVs exceed exceed these certain levels, then then the requirement can be waived. So I I think it's not only um, applies to, you know, large multifamily units, but it applies to other situations or types of buildings that are go on on the list. Um, and so that that sort of is one of my, you know, overarching, you know, how how or or is there such an exception or not?
Yes, there is an exception and it's this it, we currently have an exception in the Los Altos reach code um, for multifamily. And we staff with the building official has decided that it would be the same exception. So this, the EC is recommending that we look over the model code for that exception.
Yes.
Okay.
So the only comment I would make about that, I just don't want for reasons of equity and fairness, I don't want to differentiate between affordable housing and and regular housing. I think we should apply exactly the same formula regardless. I think part of the issue with EVs right now, it's a it's not really affordable and we need to make it as affordable as possible and having charging stations in affordable in affordable multifamily housing is critical. So I don't know exactly what exceptions are in the current reach codes, but I think we need to be very careful about what we do. That's my personal recommendation. So I have a question about low power level. Could you define what low power level mean? Means?
Yes, a low power level to EV ready is uh, twenty amps difference than a level two EV ready. And the um, and I'm I'm not a electrical engineer, but um, the way I understand it is that the output is also lower amps. So um, it's a sixty amp output versus um, a thirty amp output.
Okay, so I think we should define it. Um, I mean, maybe it's 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 will be defined in the reach codes in the ordinance.
Yes, this will be defined um, in the ordinance.
Uh, I I I believe it's defined in the model ordinance.
Yes.
The standard.
Yeah, it's a thirty amp uh, output is gonna give you about seven point two kilowatts of charging every hour, which is sufficient for most EVs today. And I think if you if that's your definition of low power, I think that's that's a good definition. Now it's piece less than thirty amp, I think it's questionable.
Yes, as defined in the model code. Which is a minimum of twenty amp capacity wearing and the EVSC is a sixteen amp minimum capacity.
Sixteen amp. I think that's that's low.
So I I don't think we should get into redefining these. These are, you know, pretty, this is something that's gonna be standard um, use right throughout any municipality using the um, re-model reach code. So if we go in and start changing the requirements, that's gonna be extremely confusing for builders.
I agree. I have one other broad um, question is that I I believe that that the recommendation is to follow the model reach code regarding what is uh, where the where the EV uh, infrastructure is provided for parking. In other words, the the model reach court is sort of is broader than our current reach code. And it's broader in the way it it just refers to off-street parking. Whereas I believe our current reach code um, refers to garages and or attached or detached garage. And so I I I think the intent of the environmental commission subcommittee was that the recommendations for EV would cover off-street parking as specified in the model code.
So does it include uh, parking outside of the building?
If it's off off-street.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Per the environment, the uh, model reach code, it's one hundred percent of dwelling units or one hundred percent of parking spaces, whichever is less.
Okay. So we strengthening what we have right now, obviously, in terms of adding EV charging and then um, basically moving from EV ready to um, oh, sorry, EV capable to EV ready. So there is no EV capable anymore. It's just charging an EV ready.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or clarification?
I just want to double check. This is more of a question for Dawn. Um, the allowed load allowed load sharing for single family homes. Do you do you think that's the correct term to use? Is it load sharing? Or would it better to say um, uh, load balancing or is it fine? Because I I my I'm in my head, it's if you have one circuit that can go to either one car or the other, not necessarily share the load.
Yeah, it's it's one or both, you know, it can be either, I guess. Yeah, it's it's one or both, you know, it can be either, I guess.
If it's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we have the proper term there.
Yeah, I'll uh, you know, I think as the as the writing of the of the ordinance comes up, I think that that's something you can look at in in the fine print. I think probably the language here is okay.
I think the load management is the uh industry term as opposed to load sharing. Uh, but it 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 does include load sharing in load management, uh if that makes sense to you.
No, maybe load management is a better word than.
I think I think again, that's I think what the industry uses, so it's probably the right term.
Yeah, it would refer to ALMS here.
Okay. So it seems we pretty comfortable with what we have here on this slide.
Do we want to add a note for an amendment for that affordable housing language to vote on it, or?
Well, I was I was recommending that we don't have any language for affordable housing in there. That we treat all multifamily housing the same with regards to in the infrastructure. I don't know if everybody agrees, but it's just that was what I was suggesting.
I get that anyone else wants that language, um we can put it to a vote either.
Well, this it 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 gets pretty, it gets complex in a big hurry, because um if if you include language about um uh an exception for the cost basis, then um you know, I'm not sure we had to worry about affordable housing. You know, if you have that language of so much so many dollars per parking space, then it'll take care of itself. I do have some concern, though, by even going to low-power um level two EV, i- i- it it may include a cost burden on affordable housing. And I Bruno, I hear you, but I I think we should follow the model codes on on this type of um language.
I believe the model code also uh TRC recommends that a low-cost option for affordable housing is is um option B.
But that does uh, you know, and I I I understand the staff recommendation was for, you know, to not have level one, um so a low-power level two is a better option. I I tend to agree with that over the long run. Um, but I also want to be cognizant of of potential cost burden um to affordable housing, and I'm not an expert in this area at all.
So short of knowing what language already exists in the in the Bay Area model reach code, I think we 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 can't really make any uh decision on this at this time. I think we should. I think we can go along with the staff recommendation, and I understand that the subcommittee is okay with that. All right, so next slide then. All right, so um hotels and motels. So that would be for new ones, obviously, right?
Yes.
So I I I'm I'm struggling with this one a little bit, frankly. Because today finding a hotel that has a reasonable charging network for owners of EVs is challenging, and I think we should start thinking about not how many cars or EV cars will be showing up at the hotel today, but how many cars we should be showing up at the hotel in ten years from now. Um, so my preference would be, and again, you know, it's going beyond the Bay Area model reach codes would be to increase the level two EV charging um percentage.
So I I originally had a little bit of that same reaction, but then as long as, I mean, they have the EV two capable sixty percent level two EV capable. So that means it can easily be scaled up to meet increasing demand as more and more um customers come with EV, so I I think that's um adequate.
So should should we should we start thinking about maybe increasing the level two EV charging percentage? Removing the low-power level two EV ready and just having the EV capable as the other one. So you would have X amount of level two EV chargers and X amount of level two EV capable, which could be upgraded to EV charges reasonably fast. Do we need the low-power level two EV ready? I mean, I am just talking about three level of EV infrastructure there for hotels and motels, and I'm not sure we necessarily need all that. We just need to decide what we think is the most reasonable course of action.
W- well, again, the low power allows for you to allows a building to manage the load on the building, and uh if you think that most guests are going to be parking overnight, a low power will be completely sufficient. I I think there's good reasons for the way it's structured now. Um, and it's not, you're not really introducing any kind of new charging. It's just you've got ten percent ready to go with a high-power level two and thirty percent low power, and then you can add more level two um as necessary. I I think it's the right approach to to scaling without adding too much cost upfront and too much load.
Okay, yeah, I I I agree with that. I think uh we have to be careful that we don't overburden these hotels. I I don't think they're ever going to need a hundred percent level two parking spaces, not not a hundred percent of the people would not charge their car overnight in a hotel. And and so I think this is a good way to start, and again, it it leaves plenty of room for quick growth uh moving forward.
Something else to keep in mind is this only applies to new construction. So it would be a new hotel and not an existing one.
I mean, I'll go along with what the what you guys want to do. I just think that's a little bit short-sighted to do it this way, but I think it's not planning for the years ahead, and I think, you know, with California banning banning the sale of E uh ICE cars by two thousand thirty-five. Um, you're looking at twelve year twelve years down the road. Hotels will be around for a lot longer than that, so you know, the fact that EV capable is fine, you can upgrade. I'm not sure we need the low-power level two EV ready. Why don't we make it simple and say twenty percent level two EV chargers and eighty percent level two EV capable, and I think that takes care of the needs today, and we'll be able to take care of the needs tomorrow. And it's not an added cost to the hotel. Actually, I think it's about a wash, even less to do it this way.
Because again, you 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 have to take into consideration the load um of on the building and, you know, not only just for the building, but for, you know, the broader network. If if you can meet the needs with the lower power, um then that's the most efficient way to do it.
Okay, I mean, I think at the end of the day, so what if you had ten percent of level two EV chargers compared to thirty percent low-power level two chargers is the same chart? It's the same load really at the end of the day. It's just you making it better, more practical than.
Well, I I I think you have to look at the total cost, Bruno. It's it's not just the load, it's the wires are running to each parking lot, uh parking space uh which gets adds cost, uh so I think it is it is different. And this contemplates, I think the way it's set up is uh contemplates that fact that people will need different levels of charging. Some will only need ten miles overnight. They're just coming from the airport. They have a quick meeting, then I say they may not need to charge at all, uh and others may need a full charge, and they'll get that overnight on the level two. Um, so I think this contemplates what people what people may need and the costs associated with that.
Okay. I mean, if that's that's what the the you guys want to do, that's fine. I think we can, we can, we can do that. You know, I'm not a contractor, so I can't discuss prices. I'm not sure what the price difference would be between the twenty eighty and the ten thirty and sixty. I don't think there is much of a price difference, but I can't argue on this one because I don't know. So um, so let's move on then and look at office and institutional. So I think that's not very different from what we have right now. It's just um getting rid of level one EV ready and replacing it with level two low-power EV ready. Which I think is fine. I think that's that's the way to go, I think, in my opinion. And then other non-residential, um you remove the ten spaces more than ten spaces requirement in there. And then you've made it a bit stronger, more in line with the Bay Area model reach code. So any questions, comments? Are we all good with that? Okay, I guess we are good with that then. Do we have another slide? Tanya?
Yes, there's one more.
Yeah, okay, let's get to the next slide. We are good with that?
I uh I think I think based on that we really don't have any loading spaces, I think that the holding off to the next cycle may be appropriate, even though that there there there's some descriptive language in the model code. Um, so I I don't take objection object to that. I think on the the last item, though, uh there's a point that we should discuss is that some of the um the capable conduit that may have been put in uh for some of the existing parking. I don't know if we've had any of that occur yet in Los Altos, but uh when you upgrade it to a level two, um the conduit say its size may not be adequate. And so the, you know, if if you if you had a EV level one ready or capable, um you may not be able to get the wires through that will support an EV level two. I don't know that you're saying comment Laura that that you see.
Yes, I think that that makes sense.
Um, so I don't know, I um we may, we may be uh requesting something that it it's not just pulling wires and and changing out some panel boards, and it may mean that some of the buried conduit isn't sufficient. And uh I don't know, maybe staff had an idea as to if I don't know if we're raising a unique question, or if if staff contemplated this and figured that it was uh an acceptable risk.
Yeah, that's a a good um, a good point. I think the intent here was to move away from the the level one ready um to stay aligned with the green uh the current green building code. Um but if is the recommendation to um consider this? Consider staying within the Bay Bay Area model code?
Well, I'll offer one other suggestion, and and it may be as to how you put it together, but if you have this language that um that uh will permit an exception if it costs more than so much a parking space, then you have an avenue that if it's cost prohibitive prohibitive to the contractor, you can waive it or you can negotiate a compromise of some sort. Um, that would be another way of potentially dealing with we're talking about what ifs here.
Okay, so can we make a a mention to look into potential exceptions for the second part of that um recommendation, which is about the EV capable spaces becoming uh level two EV ready? I mean, the the real question is, we don't, we don't really know if we have already EV capable parking spaces out there. Because this is fairly new. I mean, we didn't have that uh in the previous reach code, so I'm I'm not sure there are any EV capable level one parking spaces right now in Los Altos.
That's correct.
So it might be a new point. I mean, it's just because it's it's non-existent right now. It's not when we upgrading from level level one capable to level two ready. We going from nothing to level two ready. So that might be okay, actually, the way it is.
I would agree. I I think I'll go with that.
All right. So we may not need that exception, actually, after all, Tanya.
Well.
Done?
No, I I agree. It may not be. I I don't know what the circumstance is, and so i- i- it's just a question that that if it's if it's not a concern, then okay. If it if there's a potential for a concern, then I'm suggesting one way to potentially mitigate that is is on a cost basis. But I I think we ought to let it to the people drafting the ordinance.
Yeah, I will. I I think we can, we can stick with the current staff recommendation would be my my gut feeling because I don't believe there is much infrastructure right now whatsoever in current parking spaces in Los Altos. So I would, I would stick with that for the moment and then maybe staff can take a look at whether that comment we were making is relevant or not, understanding that we believe it's not relevant at this time.
Yeah, we don't know if, um, if, for example, any of these new buildings going up on First Street, if they have level one capable or not, I, you know, we don't know. It's a question.
That wouldn't be a require, that wouldn't be a current requirement, but.
EV capable was not in the previous code cycle, so none of them would be EV capable.
So I I think I think it's probably a mute point at this time. I I think we should stick with staff recommendation if if the commission is okay with that. All right, so let's, uh, who wants to make a motion on the EV infrastructure requirements? We don't have any more slides, right? Yeah, that's right. So we haven't made any changes, I believe. Except for multifamily housing, we had discussions around affordability. So maybe I tried to make a motion then. A move to approve the staff recommendation for the EV infrastructure requirements for the new reach codes. As is with no amendments. Second. Thank you.
Okay.
Any second thoughts? Before we vote? No? Okay.
Bruno, the only thing, the only thing that I have is, and really, again, it's it's just looking into, you know, are we gonna provide an exception for based on a cost related per parking spot exemption that's in the model code? And does it, and and follow, basically, are we following the model code? Are there we taking some exceptions to the model code in in, um, in in this recommendation? That's, that's what I was trying to get at, and maybe I explained it very poorly about my two questions, one about the cost and the other about that this all deals with off-street parking. And and, uh, you know, I, I guess I have to, I'm questioning, I I just have a question that, you know, if it is it staff's intent to follow the model code in those in those areas.
So do you want to make an amendment to the current motion?
Well, I don't know how to phrase it. I I guess amend the motion to to make sure that we're following the model code and in uh, cost exemptions for parking and and relationships to off-street parking and that the the that the recommendations apply to all off-street parking.
Okay. Are we all good with that? With that amendment?
I I I guess I'd like to make sure that's, you know, that from staff that that's a reasonable request that I'm not that I'm not, uh, doing something that seems erroneous to begin with.
Tanya and Casey, do you have any comments on that?
I think the specific language within the model reach code is something that we need to take a closer look at to see if we're going to include it or not um, within our updated ordinance. I think we just focused on those the specific occupancy types first. But.
Well, then then maybe the amendment is to consider those two areas that I suggest.
Off-street parking and cost.
Yeah, staff can look into those two further.
Okay.
And consider that as part of their recommendations.
So include that, you know, consider what's in the model reach code for street parking and cost with regards to beauty family housing requirements. Okay.
Well, I think I think it applies off off the, uh, across the board, those items apply that they apply to all the different types of of buildings.
I think that's right. So we'll take a look at.
Where they apply to single family duplexes and townhomes. Should it?
They may not apply there, but I think they applied all the rest.
Okay. Okay. I think we're pretty clear on that. Can we vote now?
Yes, so the amended motion is to approve staff's recommendations as shown and to recommend that staff consider recommendations that apply to all off-street parking as designated in the model code as well as including, um, that staff consider including the cost exception as outlined in the model code.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I will take a vote. Chair Dalianu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Texler? Yes. Commissioner Lu? Absent. Commissioner Van Rees?
Yes.
Commissioner Hume?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whedon?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on. Uh, we have now a presentation from Lisa Alteiri, who is the founder of Community Climate Solutions. Um, CCS is one potential platform that would allow us in Los Altos to engage residents to take actions uh, against climate change. And obviously, in that matter, help us reach our 2035 carbon neutrality goal. So Lisa, if you don't mind, um, starting your presentation and introducing your platform and what you can bring uh, to the city of Los Altos with that platform. Thank you.
Absolutely. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and share a little bit about our work and our platform on residential engagement on climate solutions. And sorry, I was just trying to position. Um, I'm not used to having the lighting at this time of night, so I'm trying to make sure I'm not blinding you with my my light back there. So um, I will, um, let's see, me share my screen. And come into slideshow mode here. So just a little bit of background before I show you the platform itself. We started off, I started off working actually in my own backyard in Palo Alto with residents after the city Palo Alto did their 2007 climate action plan, their first one, and they uh, when they finished their climate action plan, the first thing they did is have a community meeting. One of the first major actions was to have a community meeting, bring the community into the conversation. And they looked for volunteers to help engage the community. And what they acknowledged was that uh, the majority of the missions were not coming from city activities, but were really coming from the community. And so they asked for volunteers to help engage residents. And I volunteered and was one of the leads of that in effort for a number of years. And so from that effort of just working to engage my neighbors and other residents in my own city, I learned, first of all, the incredible power of engaging residents around climate solutions as well as the real need for tools and good program development around that residential engagement. Um, so uh, that's a little bit about where this came from. Um, and since then, um, we've been working on this for over five years and really developing those tools, honing our program. And what I wanted to just quickly touch on before we look at the program itself is the power of combining policy plus engagement. Um, as I've been listening in for the last, um, during your your presentation, and it's all sounds very familiar. Um, and I, we're working with lots of cities that are also working on reach codes and lots of policies to look at all of the avenues that they have to really use policy to move this transition forward, to move um, the transition to, um, you know, a clean electrified community, lower emissions, and there are a lot of great options. And here on the slide are a lot of the ones you just talked about. Um, but there's also some limitations. It's hard to get at um, fuel switching existing, um, buildings with policy at this point. Um, there's no city that I know of quite yet that has has banned gas and it's something that I know as I'm was reading your climate action plan and I know that it's on your roadmap to look at really phasing out, not just on new buildings, but on existing buildings as well. But it's challenging and right now it's not, um, something that probably council could pass tomorrow. And one of the things that is incredibly helpful at this stage, when we're starting to look at these stronger policies that that, you know, many in the cities, um, city leadership wants to pass. Um, really having the, um, having residents start to learn about some of these solutions and understand what they are and why they're important and the benefits of those solutions, doing that residential engagement and outreach along with moving these policies forward forward is really powerful. It not only can help the community understand better why these policies are important, but it also can help to in enhance the engagement around taking these actions earlier on, because as we all know, we don't have time to wait on this. We need to move this forward as quickly as possible. So engaging residents and helping, um, helping the community start to learn what these actions are and and how, provide them the information and uh, to to help them understand uh, more about how to do these actions so they feel more comfortable and they're not as scary and they're, they they feel a little bit more empowered to consider doing something that putting in that heat pump that they didn't really know what it was until, you know, last month. So um, so there's a real power if you're finding policy plus the engagement together. One really great example was in the city of Palo Alto, they had this great heat pump water heater rebate that I was one of the only one of less than 10 people that took advantage of the rebate, I think in the first year or so. Um, and it was, it was really good. It was $1,200 and this was probably five years ago. And, um, I took advantage of this rebate and I was so surprised to learn that there were literally only a handful of people that had taken advantage of it. And it was really just because people didn't know it was there. So, um, so again, that's the power of raising awareness along with having really good city policies. Um, and most importantly and most powerfully, most Californians, most people in Santa Clara County and in your community are worried about climate change and they want to help, but they don't know where to start. And that is the most important part of what we do is that we find, um, just invariably, it's it's people really do want to help. Whoever we're talking to in the community, they really do want to know what they can do. And so it's it's not difficult for, um, to find that people are are ready to go and take an action, but they just haven't had anyone providing them the information about what to do. So, um, what we've been, as I said, we've been working on this for quite a while. We found a number of things that really work. When you bring these together, they're very powerful. Um, the first is having that easy to follow information source. So they have a place that they can go where they can learn. What are the actions I can take? And and for our household, you'll see with our platform, we provide, we have a very robust carbon calculator. We have the most robust household carbon calculator available tied into actions. And so people can come to our platform and enter a little bit of information about their home and find out real solid, good information around for my household, if I take these actions, what is that like? And, uh, so there's an information source where they can go, they can learn, they can get custom recommendations along with that. Sorry? Oh, Bruno, you're muted.
Go, keep, keep going, keep going, that's fine.
Right. Um, along with that information, um, having two things that are very effective at engaging the community. One is having events and activities. Um, EV riding drives, composting classes, all of these things that I know Greetown Los Altos does an amazing job of providing for the community. Um, linking those in together. Um, and then also having what we, uh, what we do as well is provide, we either coach and train, um, uh, community members to do this, or we can also, we also provide direct engagement services to bring into the community a leader-led program around engaging on solutions. And I'll I'll circle back to that in a little bit after we look at the platform itself. Um, and then, of course, marketing, helping to raise awareness about this initiative. Um, creating a community initiative around doing this shift to a carbon, a carbon-free, climate-friendly community. Um, to help, uh, raise awareness about the program itself and also highlighting certain actions. Of course, um, incentives and financing options with IRA is is going to help with as well as other initiatives in California and through through the utilities. Um, and then, of course, also having a good list of contractors that are going to not try and talk your, the homeowner out of uh, putting in a heat pump water heater. Um, and then the last one that's not on here that we need to update the slide is a concierge service where you have someone that people can just call and say, okay, this is what's going on. It's my house is drafty or my water heater is going to go out. I heard about a heat pump water heater. I'm not sure what to do next. These are the components that we find across the board really make a difference in engaging the community, helping them to um, jump in and start taking actions now, raising awareness about what the solutions are and the importance of them and, uh, and really engaging the community. So, um, just a a real quick stat, on average, 40 to 60% of a community's complete emission profile come from residents. In Los Altos, um, looking at your, looking at your climate action plan, you've got 32% coming from residential energy, which I would imagine is mostly natural gas at this point. Um, and, uh, also you have 57% coming from transportation. If you take a very conservative, um, number and estimate that maybe half of that transportation is is household daily driving, and it's usually higher than that. But if you're very conservative, even if you take that number and half of that, you still end up with 60% of Los Altos emissions coming from household activities, either home, energy use, or transportation. Um, so engaging residents to achieve your goals is is really important to reaching your cap goals. So just a couple of our programs, we are working nationally. We work in, for, um, with programs for cities and counties across the US. We're in 13 different states and growing really quickly. This is one of our programs. We're working with the Central Coast. Um, and we have a program now that is covering six counties across the Central Coast through, um, uh, it's, it's called Riesling and Central Coast. Um, and so we have programs now in all six of those counties and they're centrally, um, they're working together to design programs and outreach and engagement that goes along with the program. Um, and we're also working with San Jose with the Climate Smart San Jose Program and the, we, they're using our platform for the Climate Smart, um, San Jose Challenge. Um, so I'm going to switch over to our actual site and show you a little bit about what that looks like. So the way our site works is we provide for each community localized branding and, um, uh, and messaging. and messaging. So every community is different. So it's important for us to really provide a platform that's going to be customized locally. So you can see here, this is for Contra Costa County, they have their own domain address. They have their own logo and photo. Call the action here and they can set their own goals. There's also something we call the white join page, which is kind of a message out to the community about why this is important. This is all local content so they can choose a photo and an invitation and then a message about why are we doing this and why is this important? And, and most of, most of what we find effective here is just really acknowledging the problem very briefly, but really talking about the power that we all have and that, you know, the percentage of emissions that are coming from households where we have solutions and we have opportunities to make a difference. And about coming together as a community to create a safer and healthier future. So across our whole site, we focus on positive practical messages around solutions for both climate and sustainability. We're very focused on the, the co-benefits and talking about how these actions improve our health, our, our air quality, help families save money and create local jobs. This is Carbon Free Albany, which is a smaller community. Not, I think it's a little, maybe a little bit smaller than, than Los Altos, but a similar sized community. And then this is probably a similar community in some ways. This is the East Side Challenge for King County in Seattle, Washington. So this is a small, a group of, of smaller cities that have come together to run a program in the east side of King County, pretty much the home of Microsoft. So that is what kind of our onboarding looks like. And then just to quickly kind of walk you through the site internally. When a resident creates an account, they're brought into the system. We encourage them to create a profile to, to about, for their household to just answer some questions about what they're currently doing in their household with their energy use and the type of fuels that they're using so that we can make good recommendations for them and also track their progress. They can choose actions and then we also encourage them to work together. So this is a, a, a very strong part to our program. We focus on helping people do this with their friends or their neighbors or other community members, their, their book club or their gardening club. We work to bring people together in communities, which is a very powerful way to get people excited and engaged by making it fun, making it interesting. And then they tend to follow through and they tend to be more likely to complete actions if they're doing this together with others that they know. So we have teams and groups, teams are small, groups are big, they work together. Think, we, we work with the Girl Scouts here in, in the, in the Fremont area. We had a, a group for the Girl Scout region and then we had a team for each of the Girl Scout troops. So they could track their progress as a region and then each troop could do, track their progress. Or this could be a school with each team being a classroom. So it's very simple and easy for folks to work together on the site. Just to walk through the profile, this is the profile, this is basically our carbon calculator questionnaire. And it identifies the impact for the home in five areas of emissions. Your home electricity, home heating fuels, your transportation, your food choices and your waste stream. So four of those are the ones that are in your cap. We add food in as well, because it has a, a larger impact on climate as a fifth direct kind of impact from household activities. So we ask these questions, it doesn't take long, usually takes no more than five or max ten minutes for folks to fill this out. And we also link into utility data. So here we have a link in that can pull in PG&E data for both electricity and gas to create a baseline for the household that will allow us to, again, provide better recommendations on actions as well as track the progress for the user. And again, we make it fun, so you, you find out, enter your information about your household and then you can see your starting level here. What your impact is for your household in these different areas, you can see how you compare. There would be a custom comparison number that we would benchmark to your specific city based on the data that we have out of your, out of your climate action plan and other local stats. We can benchmark a baseline household. And then from there, we encourage folks to go choose actions. So here we have categories of actions. The core categories of climate actions are clean energy home, which is green electricity and fuel switching. We know Los Altos is, you're a hundred percent carbon free at this point, right? With electricity? So.
Trying to unmute myself, I would say yes, almost.
Yeah, yeah. So, so it'll be mostly focused on fuel switching, transportation and then food and waste. And then we also have energy efficiency and water efficiency, which is of course very important for, for California. We have community and learning, which is focused on more civic engagement, which is what you all are doing. Having, getting involved in the community in civic engagement and volunteering, talking about solutions. And then we just added a resilience category in, and this category actually has a full set of emergency preparedness content based on the FEMA content that's used in the CERT program. And so it's a full household preparedness set of steps. And then it also has additional steps of connecting with community, sharing resources, growing food. And then it has disaster-specific information plus for state and, and CERT, CERT training information. So with these, with this action set, we cover really robustly the actions that are important at a community level to prepare. Both mitigation and adaptation. And for each category, we have a short video that just gives a quick overview of the category to helps, helps you just quickly kind of understand what the category is about. And then we have the actions for each category below. So you can see here, you have your heat pump water heater, you've got your heat pump space heating and then fuel switching, both your dryer and your oven. And we have actions that apply to renters as well. So if you're renting, you can still get a portable induction cooktop, you can still get a convection toaster oven and start to move away from gas inside the home. And then each action has a page of information where the resident can learn more if they'd like. Here you can see our calculator. We have a, a lot of the actions where you can answer a question and you can quickly see how that'll update. And these estimates are based on the average cost per kilowatt hour that the residents are paying in your city. And so all of the stats that drive our calculator are localized to your city. And so we work with you when we set up the site to check the data points and make sure that the, the calculations are going to be accurate for residents in Los Altos. Points are tied to impact, so one point is equal to one pound of CO2e reduced per year or 10 gallons of water, if it's a water action. So the points are giving residents good signals around the different relative impact of the different actions. And we're actually going to pull the carbon number out separately soon, so that you can see the points and the carbon for actions that have other impacts like water and additional like resilience actions. And then we have an introduction, sort of the what and why of the action. If, if folks want to read more, the information's here, they don't have to, if they don't need the help. And then there's two to five steps on each one. So we walk through things like, what is a heat pump water heater? How does it work? What do I need to know? You know, what are the considerations around getting ready for that install? Obviously, changing light bulbs is not rocket science. So they might not need to read the steps for this one, but they're there if they need it. And then most importantly, and one of the things our cities like the most, is that you can load in all of the local resources. So for here, we have financing, rebate, community programs and information, resources, so that you can make sure that for your residents, all of the resources that are available for them on these different actions are showing up and easy to access. And then finally, once the resident chooses the actions they're working on, they can see them here on their dashboard, they can work the complete, they set goals, so we can send friendly reminders. And they can also see if they complete all the actions on their list, how much they can save and reduce their impact from where they started. Most households can save on average one to $3,000 a year by taking common actions across the site. There's a lot of opportunity for financial savings. And then most households can easily reduce 10 to 30% initially with some initial actions that are easier to do. And then over 50% easily over time as they take some of the larger actions that they're not ready for right away. So there's a lot of opportunity for savings and climate, climate impact. And then up here, we have progress for things you've completed. And we have levels you can achieve and badges you can achieve. We basically gamified it to make it fun. So along with this program, along with the platform, the platform serves the purpose of providing a place for the information and the ability to track, the ability to get good data, the ability to work together in a team and see, see your team's progress. And that's what actually, apologies, I didn't show you here. So here, for, if you have a team or a group, you have a page for that team or a group to track your progress together. And so you get a custom link to invite folks to your team and you can track your progress as a team or a group. Here, you can see each other's actions and you can post and share with each other. So we create that ability for, for folks in the community to work together and share. And the social aspect of the program is actually one of the strongest benefits to helping folks take actions. So in San Jose, just really quickly, let me show this one. This is an example, they're running a team challenge, they're calling it Go Green Teams. And they and recruit and encourage folks to create a team and then they all do their household impact. And then they meet together for a series of meetings. So they're now splitting it up, so they have one series of four meetings around climate. So that team would get together for one meeting on home energy, one on transportation, one on food and waste, and then one actually on community action. And then they have another sequence of four meetings on water and emergency preparedness. And so they would learn together at these meetings, and meetings are fun. They have like hour-long agendas or plug-and-play, they have fun activities, discussion points, videos. And then after the meetings for each topic, the households would choose the actions they're going to take and then they come back together and they talk about how they're doing and how it's going for their progress. And then we also do celebrations as well. So we have lots of engagement tools that go along with the platform. We've spent a lot of time working in communities and really understanding what sort of gets people engaged, what gets them interested in showing up and learning about this. And, and then moving forward and taking some of those actions that are going to really help you meet citywide goals and help with climate. We also have tools, engagement tools for schools, we work with a lot of schools. We have a curriculum, supplemental curriculum for grades eight through 12 that has become very popular. We're actually doing a district-wide challenge now in American Canyon in Napa County. We have over a thousand students in the last couple of weeks that have signed up and they're all working through the platform and taking actions over a two-month challenge. So we have a lot of these different programs we can bring to help start this conversation and get it going in the community.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for this great presentation. I think it was fast, but complete. So I, I, I hope that was a, a good introduction to what you can provide us in terms of residence engagement. I just.
It's late and I saw, I figured I would just go through it quickly and, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, it's late. We, definitely. I'm going to ask if there are any public comments. I think we have one already from Gary. Go ahead, Gary.
Good evening, commissioners. And I am Gary Haddon, Los Altos resident and very proud to be Los Alton of the Year for 2022. I'm also active with Greentown Los Altos. And I have known Lisa for more than 10 years. She's a delightful person, sharp, dedicated to the fight against climate change. And, you know, we've got a very challenging, robust climate action and adaptation plan. And quite frankly, it's going to take a lot to pull it off. We need to use every tool in the toolkit. And I think this is a solid, good tool. I highly recommend that you consider it. So thank you, Lisa, for your patience to hang around for over two hours waiting your turn. It was, it's good to see you again. It's been a while, actually. But anyway, she has my vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good to see you as well.
Thank you.
I actually, honestly, I haven't, I used to do a lot of work. Sustainability commission for Palo Alto as well for a number of years. And I actually strangely miss these meetings. I'm them interesting. I haven't been to one in a while.
All right. So if we don't have any more comments from the public, I'm going to open up the floor for discussions and questions, mostly questions from the commissioners.
I have a question. Do you have any idea of the typical resident who engages in your platform? Is there a certain age range or background or it's all of them?
Actually, that's what's amazing. Along with our platform, we also, as I mentioned, offer a lot of engagement tools. We also offer direct engagement services. We found of the first couple of years that we rolled this out that we were coaching on engagement and then we found that communities really benefited from actually having us help the engagement. So in our direct engagement services, we've been working with a number of communities doing that engagement. So we've learned and we have seen that it is actually really across the board. And what's most effective in our engagement work is reaching out to existing networks and groups in the community. So we work with the Rotary Club and the Girl Scouts and the faith communities and the schools. And, and almost all the communities that we reach out to and, and meet with them to talk with them about the program, we invariably find that this is something that's important to them. They've wanted to, to do something about it, but they haven't had a framework. And so they're really excited that we have this framework that's really simple. It's very easy to use where there can, community can just come together for a few meetings, learn together, share together and, and take action. So we find that all of the communities from the Girl Scouts to the Rotary Club, to the senior group, to the, to the faith community, there's, there's interest across the board for all ages and all backgrounds.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Donna.
Yes, thanks, Lisa, for your presentation. It is late and I appreciate your time. So, so two quick questions. Number one, or how many users does your website have? If you can let us know. And the second question is, is another general one is, what, what is the proposed, or what is your relationship with cities or what's the business model? How does it work?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just pulling up and give you a number up. We are a couple short of 23,000 users on our site. And our business models were software as a service. So we charge an annual fee for the platform. And then there's a one-time setup fee. So we, Los Altos is a smaller city, so it would be the lowest cost tier for us, that starts at 5,000 a year. So it would just be 5,000 a year for the platform. And then I think we already have like a prototype that we set up for Gary a while ago. So it might be a little bit less on the setup cost, but it's usually 2,500 one time for the setup fee. We probably could do 2,000 for that. And then that is the platform, plus our support in, in coaching around creating an engagement approach. If you are interested in our direct engagement services, that's just $50 an hour for engagement. And the minimum is 10 hours a month. So we've actually found that it's, we can do a lot with even 10 hours a month. We've been doing 10 hours a month for Napa County now for about a year and a half. And we now have one full school district rolling this out and the other school districts are ready to, to join them along with all of the, the cities and the county have now jumped on board and they're creating their own landing pages to track progress and create programs. So, so we can do a lot, but that's our, that's our model is just software as a service for the platform itself. And then we offer the direct engagement services on an hourly basis. If, for the direct engagement services, if, 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 if it's 20 hours a week or more, we'll hire someone locally so that they're in your community. If it's less than 20 hours a week, then it's usually remote.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have other questions? From the commissioners? So I, I have a few questions, Lisa, which the first one is to, has to do with the carbon calculator. You say you have a very good carbon calculator. The first one is to has to do with the carbon calculator. You say you have a very good carbon calculator. Can you tell us where it's coming from? What is based on?
Uh, well, it's based on uh, peer reviewed. Information around what the um, conversion stats are for the different emissions. Um, along with the basic calculations for each of the actions, which are all different. So my background professionally is data analytics and modeling. So professionally. Before I started the company, I did a lot of. Work creating custom strategic data modeling and and uh, data reporting programs for CEOs and CFOs in Silicon Valley. And so I think in terms of strategic data. When I was doing the work um, in Palo Alto as a resident. Um, we were trying to engage our neighbors and residents in Palo Alto. I looked for a carbon calculator that would work. Um, for our city and there literally wasn't one. We had with Palo Alto's Muni, we had a utility carbon intensity that didn't exist anywhere in existing calculator. There was just nothing good out there. And so when when uh, I decided to start this. I decided to actually build a carbon calculator model. So this is built from scratch. It's our proprietary backend model. Um, but it's using all of the best practice calculations around. Um, emissions, household. Carbon calculations, um, and then each action hat, we've modeled the emissions for each individual action. So we can take information from the household. And then apply that to the parameters for that action. Along with the whatever conversion stats or calculations applied to that action to give the household. Um, information on what the impact for that action will be given specific attributes. Um, so this model's been vetted by UC Berkeley's cool um. Uh, cool, uh, what is it? Cool. So what am I saying? Cool, cool city. Um, it's not cool city, but um, it's the UC Berkeley's carbon calculator program. It's Chris Jones. And uh, so we uh, paid to have them deeply vet our program and he gave us an A++. So um, and we use some of their data sets as some of our backend data sets to backup um, for some of our uh, data inputs for calculation.
Okay, and we um, for the climate action adaptation plan, we used uh, ECLi, uh, clear path actually for me clearly as the. As the base model, understanding that it's not complete and we had to put some information from other sources, but. I just was wondering if there was any. You, you were kind of, your model was kind of in line with that model or was completely separate, so.
Um, well, so what we do in our our calculators, we model the household, our whole, all of our analytics are focused on modeling the household. So when a household enters the um, fills out the household profile that we have. That gives us the information about about the household and we we create a model in our system of that household and. How much energy um, they're they're using and what type of energy they're using to heat their water, what type of energy? And how much energy they're using to heat their home. Um, and and plug load. So we we create a model of the household and then we apply the carbon. Carbon calculations to that to figure out what is their baseline, where are they starting from? And then as they take actions, we can track progress and see for each action how much they're reducing. But ours is a household model. So Icleys model is all around modeling the. The community level emissions. So it's a different model, but the um. But I'm sure that it's based on, you know, similar sort of peer reviewed carbon conversion stats.
So uh, I'm just gonna try to ask very short questions. So fully. Um, you mentioned uh, contractor education in your presentation. Can you tell us more about that?
I'm sorry, what?
Contractor education, educating contractors on installing heat pumps. Uh, whether they were a heat pumps or. You know, uh, fully C pumps and so on, heating.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So um, this is an area that we're actually developing right now. Um, we, there is in California, a program called. Um, the switches on that is developing a list of contractors statewide, and I believe that there's a lot in California, I mean, in the Bay Area. Um, so you may already have a list that will work, but we're developing right now a service to also work closely with the city. To engage um, local contractors to get that certification and make sure that they're connected in with our program. Um, so again, that would be an additional. Project outside of like our basic platform. Um, but that's certainly something we could do is to work with you to to make sure that that list of contractors is is built out and that you have local contractors that will. Be supportive of homeowners taking these actions.
We talked about adoption. Uh, you know, I I was wondering actually, so you know, you always have early adopters and people that are gonna try something that's new. And then the the issue is to get the other ones. Um, and also the issue is to retain people. So you know, based on your experience, you've been the. You've been around for about five years. You should have a good understanding and a good appreciation for how difficult it can be to retain people. Um, what what kind of rates do you have? I mean, what 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 are your data? I mean. In terms of adoption, obviously, but also in terms of how many of these people stick with it.
Uh, well, it really, it depends a lot on the engagement along with the platform itself, but really you don't. Um, it's not like Facebook where people are going to be in there all the time. For for us, what we really want to do is to help people understand the solutions. Pathway, how it relates to their house, what actions they can take in these in these specific areas of home energy and transportation and food and waste. And then, you know, make a plan to take those actions and then take them over time. So. The first part is is just learning about the solution. Second part is like choosing which actions you're going to take and when, and then it's just a matter of executing. So you you don't necessarily have to be on the platform all the time. What matters is if you're taking the actions over time and following through with those actions. And so that's what we focus on in our engagement is really um. Having folks come into the program in a way where they're doing it with others that they know. They're learning, it's fun, it's engaging, they're choosing their actions, they're making their plan, and then they follow through over time. Um, so it's not, we don't necessarily need to have someone in the platform. Um, all the time to achieve those goals. But what we are doing is we are adding another category of content in soon. We're working on that. Um, and we're going to call it, it's going to be projects. So once people come onto the platform and they learn about solutions and they already made their plan for their household. Then if they're getting excited about. Being able to take action. It's a lot of people, most people are really worried, they are concerned, they want to help, they want to know what to do. And once they find out that they have the ability to make a difference, they get excited, they know they have agency. And so when they figure out their household, then we're going to start to build in these projects that they can do. Beyond their household, how can they get involved? Um, and do other things in their community. Um, and I mean, that could be anything from getting involved in tree planning to um, so a resilience action. Um, like. You know, making sure your your um, stormwater drains are clear. So I mean, there's, there's all sorts of projects and those maybe don't sound like a lot of fun, but we have a lot of fun ideas for projects. Um, that people can um, once they've worked together in a team to learn about their household actions, then they can get involved in doing other things as well. Um, but at the end of the day, the most important thing is to follow through and take these household actions. Um, and we do see people doing that. They don't always come back to the site and mark them down, but we hear from people and we're working on um, making it more. Interesting and compelling to come back and actually mark it off once you've done it. Um, but a lot of that has to do with engagement. It really has to do with the connection that you're creating with the user and the communication you have with them. Um, where you're reminding them to mark it off and that's something that we have um, in our system and and it's an automated message that goes out to encourage people to. Complete.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was wondering about that, actually, if you had reminders and so on. So I guess, you know, outreach and engagement on a permanent basis is critical for the success of the program, I think. All right, good. Um. Any other questions? Comments? All right. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for staying with us so late from to make the presentation. Very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
No problem at all.
Stay in touch. Oh, I just want one, uh, one quick one, actually. I'm sorry about that because I know you kind of set up something for Greentown as a pilot. A while ago, uh, it's not active right now. But um, could, could you tell me? What, what was that was? I mean, it's just, it was really a pilot to get started with Greentown and nothing happened with it, right?
Um, well, the the platform really requires someone actually, you know, focusing on the engagement and and I think, you know, it's Greentown has so many things going on and there wasn't really maybe the bandwidth and. The volunteer. Group do the engagement. So um, so yeah, I mean, that's a lot of it is really, you just have to have someone, if it's someone. It's a city staff person or if it's someone from our our team doing that direct engagement, you need at least some time with someone focused specifically on running engagement for the program itself. Um, yeah.
So just uh, just an aside for um, the commissioners and staff as well, you can actually go on the site and sign up and experience the the platform. Uh, through Greentown. So I would uh, highly recommend if you have some time to just do it, just to. You know, go through the process of signing up and understanding how the that would work potentially for. If we, if we were to do that. Uh, that could be useful. Thank you very much, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. And uh.
Have a nice rest of the evening.
Got any other questions? Let me know. You too.
We, we, we'll, uh, we'll stay in touch. Thank you.
All right, bye bye.
Nice. All right, uh, moving on, I think we can go reasonably fast with the rest of the agenda. Um, I just will want to spend a little bit of time on electrification and EV fair as well as the tree protection ordinance. And uh, can we get the data update on the tree, tree protection ordinance from staff now?
Yes, we can. So. Um, new update since last time. So. The tree protection or the staff met with the tree protection. Or Environmental Commission Subcommittee in November twenty twenty two. And since then, to further inform our recommendations. We reached out to three certified arborists for fee proposals to provide technical recommendations. Related to tree species, tree replacement ratios and prioritization of protected trees. And the harvest arborist will also provide technical input. On an updated street tree planting list and a replacement tree planting list. So staff reviewed arborist proposals and selected a consulting firm to provide technical and policy recommendations to inform the update of the city's tree protection ordinance. And to create um, a new street tree planting list and private tree planting list. City staff are meeting with a consultant this week to kick off the project. To assess the current implementation process for tree protection ordinance. And to review the goals for the updated ordinance. The consultant will continue their work over the following weeks. And city staff will bring updated recommendations to the Environmental Commission Subcommittee. For bringing them to the Environmental Commission in March or April.
Thank you, Casey. Any questions regarding the tree protection ordinance? The timelines or process, maybe you can tell us more about the timelines, what are we looking at in terms of um. Getting something back to DC that's been reviewed by the Subcommittee.
So our goal is to bring something to the commission in March or April, one of those two meetings. Um, and so we'll be meeting with the Environmental Commission Subcommittee. Prior to. Prior to those dates.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Suggestions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Casey, for the update. Um, next, M. Wendo.
Okay. And for M. Wendo. The last update was that city staff met in November twenty twenty two with the EC Subcommittee. Valley Water and their contractor Green Evolution to get up to speed on M. Wendo. City staff also met internally with the planning division to review specific measures within the ordinance. Um, the current update is that Green Evolution is currently working on updating the mall ordinance based on the recent California Building Standards Code cycle. And will provide it to jurisdictions upon completion. Staff will review this updated ordinance and me internally to discuss any critical changes. And then staff will then move forward with additional research, meetings with the EC Subcommittee. In the planning and building divisions and then um, move forward with their recommendations.
So everything is on hold right now until there is an updated model ordinance, right?
Correct. So we've, we've been receiving updates um. From them, but they're still working on it. But we've been following up every couple of weeks to. To see where they're at.
Okay, so once we, once we have one, I guess that's when the work will will get started internally, right? We're just waiting for that one to.
Correct. That's, yeah, that's when the work will really um. Pick up for that item.
Do we have any expectations with regards to when this is going to be ready?
I think we've been told um. That it's soon or I think we've been told in the next few weeks, but. Uh, we're just kind of waiting to.
So we don't know. Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Casey. Any comments um, updates from the various subcommittees on the other items on the work plan? No. Okay, moving on then um. Let's talk, uh, system within the work plan, but as discussion items, um, I wanted to have a discussion around. The electronic information on the EC website. Um. You know, that's the document that was reviewed extensively by this commission by staff and was put on the website on. You know, on the Environmental Commission webpage. Uh, I believe at the end, uh, of January, the twenty fourth of January, maybe the twenty. Third of January, I believe it was put on, it was online. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at it on the website. Um, the letter to the town crier was published on on the January the twenty fifth. And uh, there was, uh, it was included in the weekly update from the city manager uh, last week. Um, so what we had planned to do in terms of. Outreach, letting people know what we're doing and that this was available, has been done. And I think I wanted to have a, a little bit of a discussion around what should we do next? Because obviously there are a couple. Things that I think we need to consider. One is to try to reach as many people as possible so that people are aware that this is available. It's a resource available on the website. Uh, so that, that's uh, that's one point. The second point is obviously. To make sure we update the resource on the website so that we are to date with regards to. New things happening, especially in two thousand twenty three, as we can have a lot more clarification about what states are going to do about the inflation reduction act. Um, and then the other, the other point also is how can we? Make it more visible. Which is the other concern. I mean, it's kind of buried on the environmental commission website right now, and I think. We should figure out ways of making it more visible and I wanted to open up the the discussion because. Um, we need to start thinking about how do we continue to communicate on that resource page for the time being.
Sarah Delanyu, maybe we can ask for any public comment as well.
Yes. If we have any member of the public still attending this commission meeting. And if you have any comments, please raise your hand. No, I think we just have Gary, actually, that's as a member of the public still attending the meeting.
And so seven forty five.
So I would reiterate the comment about um, having it very clearly. A clear link on both Environmental Commission homepage and maybe even, you know, higher up in in the city. Website structure. Um, you know, currently it's like on the sidebar and you have to click energy and then you see building electrification. And just, I think for a lot of people who. Um, maybe more new to the topic, they might not even know to to go that. To go that route. Um. I know it doesn't necessarily apply to reach codes, but. Um, at the reach code links also kind of go in various places depending on where you let you, where you click from. Um, but yeah, I think just in terms of accessibility on the website, that's one thing we should, we should work on taking care of. But then in terms of other avenues for promotion, um, yeah, I think that might take some. Some further thought um, about how we can. Um, make that, you know, more well known to the public, to the residents.
So I think in terms of, uh, I think your point is well taken. I think that's, that's pretty cool. I think it's a little bit buried in there and I think we need to make sure that it's accessible, uh, in a fairly accessible, fairly easily accessible if people log onto the Los Altos website. And I think one of the questions that I have for staff, and I think we would have for staff is, you know, is there something we can do on the website? Maybe on the front page of the website, have some kind of a link available that we, um, or some kind of an alert that would, uh, allow people to click on that and then get, go directly onto the, onto the resource and resource. That's, that's one, one option potentially. I don't know if there are other options possible, but I think maybe something that could be looked into.
But, yeah, and then the only other thought I had is, um, I don't know if it would be appropriate here, but I know Mission Trails does include information on their mailer that they mail out periodically that I believe goes to every resident. And then likewise, if SBC would be, um, able to do a bill insert or some, something just with, um, information to let customers in Los Altos know that there's this resource.
Yeah, and I think following kind of the same lead, I mean, I think, you know, is there any mailing? Can we do any mailing? Look, can Los Altos do any mailing to Los Altos residents with that information? Could be that information and other information, but is that something that would be doable?
I think we can look into some of those items on the, on the city end and talk with our communications department.
Yeah, that would, that would be useful. Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Another idea is I think part of the EV fair, there's gonna be an environmental commission table there. And I think we should, as a committee, be thinking about the resources that we want to put front and center on that table and perhaps, you know, a little card or something that, that, you know, people can walk away with or reminds the people manning the table to discuss, you know, here's a resource for you. And this may be just one example of, of things that we should have behind that table that we should start thinking about.
Yeah, it's a very good point. I think it's, it makes a lot of sense to have that kind of information at the table. And maybe a little kind of like a mailing card, something that we could use at the table and potentially mail to residents could, could be, we could, you know, it could be useful for in both cases. The other question I had is, uh, we have a Facebook page also. Is there anything we can do with the Facebook page? Have an announcement on the Facebook page? Kind of similar to what was sent by the city manager in the weekly update.
We can look into that.
Yeah, thank you. Laura.
Um, we could also do a, I don't know if that's me, a public comment, um, at just at commission meetings to, um, make people who are listening to the meeting aware, aware that we have the resource available.
Yeah, you, we had mentioned actually, uh, making a public comment at one of the council meetings.
That's what I meant. I might have said commission. I might counsel.
You said commission, but.
I might counsel.
Commissions also.
No, I'm my counsel.
Uh, yes, that's, uh, yeah, that's another avenue, actually, that would be useful. Any, uh, I don't want to spend a ton of time, but you know, if you have additional suggestions, uh, would you mind emailing either Casey or Tanya with your suggestion? That would be very useful and they can look into that and, and then report back and tell us what's possible and what's not. What we can do and what we can't do at, maybe at the March meeting, for example, would be useful. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is the EV fair. We have an update, um, on the, the status, the timelines, uh, everything. I think it's getting close.
Getting closer, yes.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we don't, uh, we don't have a presentation this time, but we have some updates. So, uh, city staff has continued to meet with the EV fair planning committee to establish elements for the fair and coordinate next steps. The event will be held at the Los Altos Unity Center on June third, twenty twenty three, from ten AM to two PM. Uh, the plan is to incorporate a meet and greet model where EV owners will display their vehicles. Attendees can chat with EV owners, ask questions and explore different features of the vehicles. And there will be e-bikes on display as well as informational booths and exhibits. The committee plans to send out notifications to informational booth vendors and EV owners in the next month. The committee also plans to advertise the event through multiple platforms, including the Main Street and South Los Altos banners, the webpage, um, Town Crier, Greentown Newsletter, social media, City Manager Weekly Update, school newsletters, neighboring jurisdiction newsletters and informational flyers. And staff plans to bring a more detailed update to the Environmental Commission in March. And we've also included a couple of items for discussion to get feedback on. And one is to discuss the Environmental Commission slash City of Los Altos informational booth. Um, and who may be willing to staff that as well as what kind of information we want to provide. And then also to discuss event names. And we proposed four, including Destination Electric, Electrifier Ride, the EV Everything Extravaganza and the Los Altos Ultimate EV Expo.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. So the booths, um, the definitely should be an environmental commission booth, I believe. I, I don't know if we need to have a city of Los Altos booth in addition to or instead of. I don't know what the policy would be on that, but definitely we should have an environmental commission booth where we can advertise other things that the commission can do. Um, and we will have information about the new reach codes also um, that we will be able to share at that event. Uh, any, any other suggestions on that? Guess everybody agrees?
Well, I'll just add that, uh, yeah, since I'm intimately already involved with this, planning this fair that I would, um, plan to at least man that for some of the time. And I would be curious if someone else, um, wants to collaborate on the actual development of it and potentially staff it on the day.
I'd be, I'd be happy to have both ways.
Great.
And I could take a shift too.
Sweet. I think you have done also. That's ready to take a shift.
Participate in some fashion, that's for sure.
Me too, Carl.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so just, uh, Carl, you, you in charge of, uh, with Casey and Tanya to involve more of the commissioners on this. At least the ones that have, that have the time and are willing to do it. Don, Laura, myself, Tom and, and maybe some others later down the road, but.
Right. With the numbers now, I don't know if that means, I guess it becomes an ongoing discussion as we have these meetings then that we update in terms of plan. But, um, yeah, I'd just be curious too, if there's anything in particular people feel should be discussed or if there's anything in particular regarding transportation, um, that, that you think we could be adding as a commission. I'm curious about any opinions on that stuff.
Well, I think one of, one of the, so I, I, I think it's gonna be mostly EV owners, right? That will be at the, at the EV fair. We won't have any representation from any dealers at this time. Even booth. Or will we have that?
We were talking to, um, a couple dealers just to see if we could have someone that would have a, a signup sheet for, they could sign up for kind of a test drive with a dealership off-site. Um, we so far have not confirmed any of those, so it's, we're focusing primarily on EV owners, but there, um, it's possible that there could be a dealer.
Yeah, I think a, any outreach you can do to, uh, local dealers that, um, have electric vehicles, I think would be useful because I think they might be interested in having some presence at the EV fair. We don't do it this year. We may do it next year, whatever, but I think it's, you know, whatever you can do to try to inside them and, uh, to come and be able to answer questions. And I'm sure, you know, not all EVs will be represented at the EV fair, so it may be, you know, it may be their advantage to be there also to showcase, if not in person, the, the, the car, but at least have some information about the cars that they sell. You have a, do we have any preferences, any preference for any of the proposed, uh, names for the event?
I'll just say, if you have any really strong reactions, like email me after, but I don't know that we have to spend too much time in the, the nation on the names here on this forum. We have a lot of, um, opinions adjusted already. I'll just say that.
We'll leave it to the experts.
I think, I think personally, I, I like the idea of including Los Altos into the name. Um, whi- whichever it is, I mean, I, I don't have any preference between the four, but I think would be useful to have Los Altos in the name, I think. It, it's a Los Altos branded EV fair in some way, so I think that would be good.
Right, uh, yeah, there's always a possibility of an addendum or, you know, before, above it or below it as well to, to mention that, so yeah.
One more comment on the, on the names. I think, uh, the C, the EV Everything Extravaganza, I think it's not, I guess, I know, I guess, I guess it's fine. I'm just wondering, since we're gonna have EV, uh, electric bikes, whether the, when we, when we say EV in the name, do we include EV, uh, electric bikes as well? It might be just, I mean, I don't know what, a vehicle is a vehicle. I guess his bike is a vehicle. I don't know.
But yes, that's certainly been a consideration is the use of EV. And I think generally getting people to recognize that EV doesn't, is not just cars. But certainly it has this connotation, um, right now of generally being thought of as cars.
Right, okay. Any other comments? Okay, so thank you very much. We're almost done. If I can find the, the agenda again. I think we have in staff updates. As the next agenda item.
We do not have any city staff updates at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one thing I want to go through before we, and the meeting is to go through, uh, council meeting assignments for the next, um, month and a half until the end of March. So I kind of need to ask you to let me know whether you are available for any of the council meetings that are coming up. Do you have a, do you have, um, Casey or Tanya, do you have a, a list of the, the upcoming council meetings?
Let me pull them up. Am I sharing? Tom, are you sharing the screen?
Somebody's sharing the screen right now.
Okay. There's a council meeting on February fourteenth, February twenty eighth. And then March fourteenth.
The fourteenth, the tomorrow, obviously.
Tomorrow, the fourteenth, February twenty eighth. And then same per March, the fourteenth and the twenty eighth.
Okay. Can I have volunteers for these dates?
Uh, there's another one that you may want to consider as well, uh, which is, uh, twenty first.
Is that a study session, Doug?
Uh, it's, it's, I think it's the priority setting, but I was looking at the agenda earlier today and
Oh, yeah.
And there's some information on it about, um, commissions.
Okay, so fourteenth, twenty first, twenty eighth, and then March fourteen and twenty eight.
I can volunteer for March fourteen.
March fourteen, that's gonna be Carl. Okay.
I can do March twenty eighth.
Um, March twenty eighth.
I can do tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow it's gonna be Laura and then we have the twentieth and the twenty first. I can take the twenty eighth. I can't take the twentieth, I'm sorry. I can take the twenty first.
Then I guess I take the twenty eighth.
Okay. So I'll take the twenty first and on the twenty eighth. Okay.
Do we have a new, um, council liaison?
Yes, we do. We do have one. Actually, I was hoping it would be here today, but he, uh, he didn't come. Um, so our new council liaison is, uh, new council member, Pete Daly.
Thank you.
Any, uh, commissioners reports, additional comments? Additional future agenda items? I think I had, uh, we have a bunch already. I mean, obviously the EV fair, the reach codes that are going, are going to come back. EV fair is going to come back. Um, I think at some point we need to, um, have another discussion around block power. And I just wanted to update the commission on a meeting we had, uh, I am, the staff and I with Mountain View, because Mountain View is also considering block power to electrify some buildings. Um, so we just had an informational meeting that took place a couple of weeks ago, I believe. Um, then the next step obviously is we, we, the, the idea was to try to see if there is ways we could collaborate together on that block power project, if that's something that Los Altos wanted to do. So we just started a discussion and, uh, you know, they actively actually looking into hiring block power, so, you know, uh, we opened up the, the, the possibility of working with them on that and doing something jointly. Which would make sense since we, uh, you know, we, we, they are our neighbors. Um, so I think, you know, in terms of new agenda items, probably we'll have something around block power coming back up. If not next month, maybe the following months. I think it has to do also with priorities at the staff level because there's a lot going on right now. Any other agenda items? Okay.
So I think, just real quick, Chair Delaney, um, for any future agenda items, we, um, moving forward, we're gonna collect any kind of items that are either mentioned within the environmental commission meeting or if we receive emails, um, from commissioners suggesting an agenda item. And then within this section of the agenda, we would like to, um, just take an informal vote to understand if we have enough commissioners that would like to put that item on a future agenda. Um, and we don't have to decide what meeting or anything. That can be decided between staff and the, the chair during the meeting agenda setting. Um, but we would like to, to take that vote to understand if the commission as a whole, um, would like to see, for example, block power on a future, future. would like to see, for example, block power on a future, future agenda.
Do we, do we want to do that? Do you want, do we want to go through a list of potential agenda items and, and, and take a, take a vote?
I think that seems to be the only open item right now. Because the EV fair, reach codes, and tree protection are, are confirmed staff priorities and we'll, we plan on bringing those back to future meetings. So I think block power would be the main one that would require some kind of vote, and I, I know Commissioner Hohmann is not on camera, but I think we would be okay with kind of a hands raised type of vote too.
Okay, with, with so let's, would, would the commissioners be, would, would the commissioners support bringing block power back for, for discussion, whether we block power without block power to, you know, continue that process?
Okay, thank you.
Any other, do we need to vote on any other ones? M. Wendo is another given, right? That's also something that's gonna come back when we're ready.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so okay, so let's, let's see, that way for the moment, we can always revisit that in the next, in the next meeting. I'm sure there are other agenda items. So if you want us to consider as a commission additional agenda items, again, as Casey suggested, can you please send an email with suggestions and we can review that at the next meeting? All right. Thank you very much. This is the end of the meeting. Thank you for sticking with it for so long, but I didn't realize we would spend so much time on the reach, because I should have done better, actually. We always spend a lot of time on the reach, but at least we're moving forward and we're getting close to the end. So that's great. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.